Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 24th meeting of the Bellingham City Council. If you'd all take a seat, please. Thank you. I have several announcements to make before we begin. On Monday, May 8th, at 7:00 PM or shortly thereafter, here in City Council chambers, the City Council will host a public hearing regarding a proposed resolution to relinquish a general utility easement over the west 20 feet of Lot 7 and 32 in Fairhaven. That same evening, also at 7:00 PM or shortly thereafter, here in City Council chambers, the Council will host a public hearing regarding a proposed resolution to relinquish a general utility easement located on the southwesterly 6 feet of Laurel Street. That same evening, at 7:00 PM or shortly thereafter, the City Council will host a public hearing considering proposed minor land use amendments. Actually, no, I hold it. That's right? Okay, yes. Let me do it this way. Originally, we were scheduled to hold a public hearing tonight, and that has been postponed and will be continued to Monday, May 8th at 7:00 PM. The matter of that public hearing is proposed minor land use amendments regarding a running list of smaller items from the Planning and Community Development Department. Excuse me, catching my breath. Finally, on Monday, May 15th, from 7:00, 8:30 PM, we, the City Council, will host our first town hall meeting. We'll hold this in the Encore Room of the Mount Baker Theater. There is seating capacity for approximately 80 people, and there'll be standing room for about an additional 20 more. We will broadcast on BTV 10, so you can watch it if you can't make it inside the doors. The doors will open, and we'll have a little open house beginning around 6:30 that evening. Would you please all join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
April Barker. Jane Knudsen. Michael Lillquist. Roxanne Murphy. Pinky Vargas. Terry Barnamann. And Dan Hamel is excused.
Yes, he's excused tonight. We're going to have two presentations this evening, and then we'll go into our 15-minute public comment period. The first presentation is by our staff recognizing Tom Grinstad for his service on the Bellingham Planning Commission. Mayor Kelly, do you want to begin that? I don't know who's been doing that.
I should say something, too. Don't. We're busy, so.
So, Tom, you want to come down? Now that we've all settled, who's going to talk about you? First of all, I want to thank you for your service on the Planning Commission, both as a member and as the chair. I think you brought a lot of humor to your position. At least, you made me laugh. And you guys did a lot of important work during your tenure there, and I know, as a mayor, I appreciate the seriousness by which you all considered your decisions for the betterment of our community. So, thank you for your service, and I appreciate it, and I think Rick might have something else to say.
Serving on the Planning Commission is not easy. It's one of the more challenging roles we have for citizens and planners who need to sort through a myriad of facts, come to the best conclusion. And what I can say is, in my time in being able to work with you, Tom, one thing was paramount in everything I saw in all the decisions you made, and that was, what was the public interest? What would be best for Bellingham? Your service made a difference. It made a difference in our community. It allowed us to have better comprehensive plan, better regulations, to have a better perspective on things move forward, and it's been a great privilege for us to have a chance to work with you. Thank you for your service.
The only thing I have to say is that you don't have a dumb Norwegian on the Commission anymore.
So, we'll say that Tom was the first appointed to the Planning Commission, I think, in November of 2010. During his tenure, Tom worked on many important and sometimes controversial projects, including the downtown plan, the shoreline master program update, which is our shoreline regulations, the 2016 Bellingham Comprehensive Plan, and he also volunteered additional time to serve on a special shoreline committee in particular. Tom's architectural background and his expertise was much valued by staff and other members of the Commission, so thank you very much, Tom. We have another presentation, very similar. This is now a presentation recognizing Jeff Brown for his service on the Bellingham Planning Commission. Jeff was first appointed to the Planning Commission soon thereafter in 2011, and during his tenure, Jeff also worked on many important projects, including the Fairhaven Urban Village Plan, the Waterfront District Subarea Plan, and of course, the 2016 Bellingham Comprehensive Plan. He was a strong advocate for housing and took a special interest in issues such as infill and housing affordability. Jeff always made a point to ensure the public's concerns, especially those of renters, were heard. Mayor Kelly, how would you like to handle this one?
Well, I'd like to say thank you to Jeff. You read the resolution, and he's not able to join us tonight, so I think we just want to thank him for his service and for bringing the perspective he did as a landlord to the Planning Commission. And if people haven't seen some of his projects around town, he did a really nice job of restoring old buildings, and I appreciate that because I'm an old building restorer enthusiast. So, with that, I don't know, Rick, if you want to say something about Jeff? Here he goes.
We can embarrass him even if he's not here.
Well, I could mention it's a tough job, being on Planning Commission. Jeff was profoundly interested in the way the community grew, and his time was spent looking from a variety of perspectives on how to provide a broad range of options for our community members. I think that my opportunity to work with him through the comprehensive plan process showed his attempt to find a balance between preserving the characters of our neighborhoods and accommodating the folks who have yet to come to our community. And I think I would convey for my colleagues a great deal of respect for his thoughtful consideration of the issues as they were presented.
And I think another thank you for Jeff is that he was interested in retiring a year earlier, and he agreed to stay on the Commission longer because of his experience as we were going through the comprehensive plan, so that was much appreciated by everyone.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you very much. When I move into our 15-minute public comment period, we have a number of people signed up today. It might go over 15 minutes, so we have a three-minute limit. If you could stick to that limit pretty strictly or even keep your words a little bit shorter. The first person I have signed up is Carrie Kovaleski. Would you please come forward? And then Cadence Moorehill. When Cadence get ready to come up next, after that, Hill Cummings.
I was planning to discuss more important issues facing Bellingham but felt compelled to follow up on something that was said last time by a City Council member. I was absolutely appalled when I heard the statement that our federal government needs to better prioritize giving money towards HUD instead of spending $59 million on launching 59 Tomahawk missiles in Syria. Newsflash: There will not be a place for Americans to live if we don't do something about tyrants killing their own people, especially babies with weapons of mass destruction, AKA chemical weapons. The ban on chemical weapons dates back to World War I. Back in January of this year, Obama said we had eliminated Syria's declared chemical weapons program. Both John Kerry and Hillary also lied directly to the American people by telling us chemical weapons were no longer available in Syria. Obviously, they were wrong. The only countries that objected to Trump's actions were Syria, Iran, North Korea, and Russia. No surprises there. Even the alphabet news stations, who lean left, agreed with Trump's stance on protecting the Syrian people who are victims of the chemical attacks made by Assad. Trump enforced the red line unlike Obama. The City Council's members' statement was so outlandish and far-left, very few people in this country and around the world would agree with it. Even Hillary said she would have done the same thing. Furthermore, John Kerry, Nancy Pelosi, and Chuck Schumer all supported the strike. Unfortunately, this kind of viewpoint is what we have on our council, representing and making decisions for the city. This is outrageous. There is no diversity on this panel in regards to different viewpoints and race. Council members, have you served in the military? Do you work for the Department of Defense, or are you Joint Chief of Staff? We are not here to listen to your foreign policy political beliefs. We are here to listen on how you plan on fixing our roads, deal with our homeless, crime, drugs, and housing issues. We are here to talk about how to make the city of Bellingham better. You are complaining about $59 million for Tomahawk missiles when Obama doubled our national debt, gave $1.7 billion in cash to Iran in January 2016, and upwards of $33.6 billion in cash and gold to Iran between 2014 and 2016, according to testimony provided before Congress by an expert on the nuclear agreement with Iran. Obama basically bought out Iran in order to make the deal and funded a country making nuclear weapons that ultimately would be used on us or our allies, as well as a country that supports terrorists. ISIS is abundant in Iran, and Hassan Roussini, Iran's president, helps support ISIS. ISIS routinely rapes, kidnaps, and enslaves women, executes oh homosexuals, and slaughters Christians. Where was your outrage when the federal government did not prioritize our money under Obama?
Just for the record, I'm a Vietnam veteran.
Next will be Cadence Moorehill, followed by Hill Cummings, and then Bryn, I'm going to say Lovely. So, is Cadence here?
I would like to start by saying, though our homeless people on the streets rely on our tax dollars for basic human needs, we as individuals are not to force one to live a certain way should they prefer another way. There seems to be a dead-set mentality on forcing these people into our healthcare systems, though the healthcare system is meant to be voluntary. If these healthcare systems are a stipulation to receiving low-income housing, what's to stop them from collecting our biodata as a stipulation? Low-income housed people are already forced to say they're immensely ill or drug addicted. I have also witnessed friends with injuries who go up to the emergency room for help, willing and able to pay through means of insurance they pay for, only to be turned down because of their homelessness claim in our society. There also seems to be a want to be fearful or call the cops on these people, when in fact, they are just living their life not to harm anybody. If we want these people to act cordial to our established rules, we must greet them with love and not fear or hate-based circumstances to deal with throughout their already hard lives. We are to help these poor people until they become leeches to our individual lives, and we cannot put food in our stomachs, houses over our heads, or clothes on our backs where those are the basic necessities for life. Another problem I'd like to bring forth is the psychological use of small laughter or snickering while people are voicing their problems. The psychological term for this tactic is called impugn ridicule. This creates an undermining effect of our problems, so we cannot be heard. Terry, why did you feel the need to snicker at people's problems at the last meeting? This behavior is incredibly inappropriate for a political setting because of the main reason I just listed. If the people on this committee do not do their jobs we, the people, fund, then the society attempting to be established will fall apart. The board members had a job to lead the people of Bellingham to prosperity and happiness and said they have led us to apathy and anger towards the way the system is ran here. Remember, we, the people, pay you board members through our tax dollars, the money we spend and the work we do. We, the people, put the food on the table for the board members, and we, the people, have the absolute control. It is detrimental that the community listens to our problems otherwise we will not thrive as a whole. There is a covert slavery system being established here that is considered to be completely legal but is morally very wrong. Have you all noticed that despite your complaints to these people, the middle-class housing prices seem to keep rising along with rent prices? They want us to work for the greed gain of money. It takes more than one minimum wage job to hold an apartment in this state. In the slave days, for the slaves, it was all work and no play. The same exact thing is happening here, just very covertly and unnoticed, because these people don't know how to explain it or are afraid to, because if they do, they could be attacked indirectly by these elitists. They are forcing the middle class away on purpose to bring more elitists to run the town more efficiently in the ways I just described. I hope that my voice has reached all of you, because if you do not believe me now, you will in the future, because you will see. They do not want the people to speak for your hometown. They want you to move away, so the struggle is between the elitists and the lower class. They want that power influx so they can have absolute control. Don't let them.
Next will be Hill Cummings, followed by Bryn Lovely, and then Chris Diley.
Hill Cummings, I live at 1517 Texas Street, apartment number 24, and I'm kind of bummed out because there's no overhead projector. I was all prepared. I'm here tonight. I usually don't represent, there is? We're having this work. It's my first time, I'm practicing. I get to, anyways, I'm practicing.
Hold on a second. And sir, if you could speak a little closer to the mic when you're speaking. Thank you.
Again, I'm Hill Cummings, and I'm here to represent today. I'm actually representing someone. I'm representing the Resident Action Project. It's going to be on here. The Resident Action Project, I don't know if you're familiar with it. It started in 2015. It's part of the Washington Low Income Housing Alliance. It's funded by the Washington Housing Alliance Action Fund, and it's part of this, I'm nervous, but the Centers for Community Change. The Centers for Community Change. I don't see this anywhere, so. But anyway, I could read it, but anyway, Resident Action Project, we are organizing statewide network of people directly impacted by housing and homelessness issues to build power and change policy. I'm here to introduce myself and introduce this group in order to make clear that we need to collaborate in this town about issues, and that is what RAP is all about. I could read here, it's probably easier for me just to read it. I've got time, so I don't want to take too much time. But are you somewhat, like, if you're people who want to take action to expand access to affordable homes that are doing homelessness, the Resident Action Project is people like me. That's what the key is, I think, in our whole issues, are us. The people who are experiencing homelessness are homeless, are in housing, and have gone through these processes, and can actually speak for ourselves. And that is the whole process between what the Resident Action Project will be doing. I have been focused, I'm actually the district lead for the 42nd District for Washington Low Income Housing Alliance. We've been focusing on issues at the state level with the legislature, 1570. And right now, we're lucky, in a way, we're cursed, but they're in session now, so we need to go for bills like House Bill 2186. And we need to have ways for us and our community, people say the Resident Action Project or things like that, or things based in Seattle, but no, we're making a bridge between people like us that live in our community and what our community needs, and have our voices told in Seattle. And what I envision is, as I want to ask my main question, is what is the best way to approach the city? I just moved back into the city because of my housing issues. I got exiled because of Section 8 housing, and I know all these issues I could go into, but my main question right now is, what is the best way for a citizen like myself or a group like ourselves who have projects and initiatives to address the city? Do we go to our individual wards? Do we go to the mayor's office itself? And who do we go to? Because there are issues that are coming up that are effectively, that are being dealt with on the state level, but these things are going to be affecting us locally, and some of these initiatives are, from what I hear, are going to be happening locally about housing discrimination, about certain tasks, and then ways to involve the real estate community, and the ways to get affordable housing issues taken beyond just providers and cities, put it on the developers, bring everyone to the table. So, with that, could someone tell me what's the best way to talk to you folks?
Thank you.
If it comes up to find an idea or initiative, or we have something to bring to you.
Thank you. Generally, you do not answer questions, but I will say there is no wrong door. There's many ways to reach the city. Try all of them. I will then go on. You may hand those out. Thank you. Next, we'll go on to Bryn, followed by Chris Diley, and then Galen Hertz. Go ahead, Bryn, whenever you're ready.
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, thank you for allowing me to come and speak here today. I would like to talk about how we treat homeless people just for being homeless. What inspired me to talk about this topic is when I saw homeless people lying on the sidewalk exposed, because people put up fences around the Albertson's doorways in my neighborhood. People were complaining to the owners of the business that homeless people were sleeping there, and they didn't like it, so they put up gates where homeless people could take shelter without bothering anyone. I would like to start by talking about some of the problems. Our homeless are being closed out without giving them another place to go. Our community needs long-term solutions and homelessness in our community. Some other communities have tried using shipping houses, small houses, and bicycle houses. In Hawaii, they passed a law to let doctors prescribe homes to homeless people because homeless is considered a medical condition. Some ideas is to help our community. One solution is taking old buildings that have been closed for a while and changing them into homeless shelters. Our community needs to think about what homelessness is and how we can help. I came here today to ask for your support in raising awareness and finding funding support programs that offer long-term solutions. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the time you allowed me to speak.
Thank you, Bryn. That was very good. Generally, we don't allow applause, but if you're young enough, you can applaud. Chris Diley, Galen Hertz, and then Rihanna Johnson, please. Chris, go ahead.
My name is Chris Diley, homeless here in Bellingham. Yeah, that was very good. Commendations to that. And I would like to add, as far as homelessness, there was an article in The Western Front last month that, where they said now is the time that we need to have regulation on rental rates. And I think that was decades ago, was now was the time, you know, decades ago was the time to have regulation on housing. What they didn't say is that The Seattle Times pointed out is that Washington State, it's illegal, it's against state law to regulate rental rates, so you can't do it. So, it's very confusing when The Western Front, our own university here, is informing us, the public, completely erroneously, giving us a false impression that we can regulate the rental rates. We can't. And we're supposed to be a progressive state? We're not a progressive state. That's the source of the problem right there, a major source of the problem. And then instead, we resort to ad hominem against the homeless, you know, it's mental illness, it's alcoholism, it's a drug, et cetera, et cetera. No, no, stop the ad hominem and look at the system. Look at, the system is where the problem is, and we need to fix the system. I don't mean to be preachy, but I'll just switch real quickly and addressing the grizzly issue once more, because we're about to decide, the federal government is going to decide next month on reintroducing the grizzlies into the Cascades, or sometime soon, they're going to decide. This is my visual prop. So, that's what I believe the result will be, is roadkill mothers and orphaned cubs. The federal government, all over the country, the interstate, the speed limits have been increased in many places to 80 miles per hour. So, when you have grizzly habitat in Montana, say, or Wyoming, and you've got the I-90, and the semis roaring through during the nighttime at 80 miles an hour, you can see how there's going to be even more and more roadkill. They say that the reason that they're trying to justify bringing the grizzlies into the North Cascades is that it's good for the ecology. That's a nice reason, but it's not enough, because it will result in roadkill, and it's also not good for people, because at the same time, they're recommending, they're advising people to use bear spray, and not telling people that bear spray is insufficient to stop a bear and a bear attack. So, we've got a public safety issue, and we've got a bear conservation issue, but at the same time, they're leading everybody to believe through the propaganda, through the newspapers, and through the TV stations, that it's a good idea, that it's best for the bears, for bear conservation. If you're truly in favor of bear conservation, a person will oppose the reintroduction of grizzlies into the Cascades. I'm short on time, so I'm not a very good speaker, but I just wanted to bring that once more, because they're about to make their decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Galen Hertz, followed by Rihanna Johnson, and then Ben Larson.
Good evening, council members. My name is Galen Hertz, and I'm the local issues coordinator for the Associated Students of Western Washington University. I'm here tonight to ask for your support on two simple policies to support student success and the well-being of our city. The Associated Students is asking for an easy-to-understand educational pamphlet on tenant rights and responsibilities be given to every renter when they move in. We're also asking for tenant notification of voter registration to increase voter access in Bellingham. The Associated Students wants to acknowledge and thank the City Council for their good work to protect renters, such as the Rental Safety and Inspection Program. We see providing a simple, short educational pamphlet on tenant rights and responsibilities as an easy next step and beneficial for all parties who are connected to renting. Renters can benefit from information on tenant rights, such as knowing if you have no heat or hot water, the landlord has 24 hours within receiving a letter to begin making repairs, or knowing what can and can't be deducted from a security deposit. I've heard too many stories of people's deposits being unfairly taken, appliances broken and unrepaired, and unscrupulous landlords that lead to poor mental health and unsafe living situations for renters. Landlords can benefit from having their tenants educated on tenant responsibilities, such as not allowing garbage to build up around the unit. Neighborhood leaders and homeowners and taxpayers can benefit as well from increased education about proper tenant waste disposal and move-out habits to prevent Couch Week and Couch Months. The idea has already been implemented with success in Ann Arbor, a college town of similar size to Bellingham since 1978. Their packet is 36 pages long. We support a much smaller, easily readable, and well-designed pamphlet. A council member we met with made the excellent point that the pamphlet should be available in English and Spanish to be more accessible. We completely support this idea. We're very willing to work with City Council members and staff to help develop the language of the pamphlet. Secondly, we're asking for a tenant notification of voter registration program to improve voter access in Bellingham. This is a straightforward, simple policy that gives new renters a voter registration form when they move in. Many renters miss out on voting due to moving frequently and having their ballots mailed to their old address. The mobility of voters has been identified as one of the key barriers to voter participation by the bipartisan 2014 Presidential Commission on Election Administration. Having moved around Bellingham six times in the five years I've lived here, I know it's very easy to forget to update your voter registration when you're dealing with the mayhem of moving. We look forward to continuing the conversation with you all and collaborating on these policies to protect tenants, advance voter access, and improve the quality of life of everyone in Bellingham. Thank you.
Thank you, Galen. Next up will be Rihanna Johnson, followed by Ben Larson, and then David Henkin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rihanna Johnston, and I'm a co-organizer for the Bellingham Tenants Union, as well as a renter in the York District and a young professional in the community. I'm here tonight to support the AS's proposal that Galen just talked about, on behalf of BTU, to make additions to Bellingham rental laws by requiring landlords to provide basic tenant rights information as well as voter registration forms when tenants are signing new leases. BTU's mission is to advocate for solutions that ensure safe, affordable, equitable, and sustainable housing options in our community. We believe that ensuring renters have access to information on their basic rights and their responsibilities is an obvious first step to ensuring the safety of Bellingham renters. Through our efforts canvassing and talking to renters throughout the community, we found that many just don't have the basic knowledge of really basic things that Galen talked about. So, direct access to that information about tenant issues, such as the repairs process, evictions, tenant and landlord responsibilities, as well as outlining further resources, increases that renter education, and it will not only make renters safer, but it will also increase renter and landlord accountability, and make both renters and landlords better neighbors and members of the community. So, on behalf of BTU and myself, I ask you to please consider these proposals. We look forward to working with you further on this issue, and I thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next is Ben Larson, followed by David Henkin, and then Peter Frazier.
Have somebody to hand up? Hello, council members. My name is Ben Larson. I'll be speaking on behalf of Julia Burns, who's the Campus Community Coalition Coordinator. I would like to begin by taking a moment to show my support for the issues Western students put forth in their local lobby day, namely, the need for more education on tenant rights and responsibilities. As the coordinator for the Campus Community Coalition, I spend a lot of time at neighborhood meetings, MNAK, and in conversation with community members about student-related issues in the community. The most frequent issue I hear about is not about loud parties, but about litter in a bin and household items. What we learned through a student survey by the Tenant Waste Task Force is that students know very little about how to dispose of trash properly. In one instance, we went to a few houses that had been reportedly repeated for trash issues. The students told us that when they moved in, garbage cans had been on the curb when they had moved in, and they assumed that was where they were supposed to go. What they did not realize is that, in fact, you were supposed to bring the trash bins up close to the house, where they are protected from wind, cars, and animals that can knock the garbage out of the bin. Since the visit, there have been no Since the visit, there have been no issues of any kind, um, from that tenant on that block. A lack of education around abandoned furniture was also evident in our survey. We discovered that many students leave their unwanted items out because, uh, they believe others will appreciate receiving free stuff, and the items will be reused rather than go to the dump. Although their intentions were good, the students did not realize that their actions affect the environment, damage neighborly relations, and cost the taxpayers money. As a result, I think we sometimes forget how much we know and how much we really need to do to teach our young adults to be good neighbors and community members. Another aspect of my job is to educate students about off-campus living through our Off-Campus Living website and social media and events on campus. I have the opportunity to speak to many students about their experiences living off-campus, many of which are negative. I regularly receive, uh, questions from students about their rights and responsibilities as tenants on a variety of issues from my landlord won't replace my recycling bin, to I haven't had heat in my apartment for a week, or very often, my landlord isn't giving me, giving me back my damaged deposit. Because we hear so many stories like these on almost a constant basis, we send many students to the tenant clinics put on by law advocates, and I do as best as I can, uh, to, uh, provide as much programming and outreach as possible with the time I have. It is very clear to me that the students need more education around tenant rights and responsibilities, and it is something they are seeking. Increased education for tenants would be hugely beneficial, not just for students, but for the neighborhoods where they live, for the landlords who have often had to deal with the challenges that arise when neither party knows what is expected of them. I'd also like to mention that I think it is very, very beneficial for landlords to have educational resources available to them as well. In my experience, it isn't only tenants who are unaware of their rights and responsibilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. Speaking of law advocates, next up is David Henkin, followed by Peter Frazier, and then Yoshi Ravel.
Thank you. My name is David Henkin. I'm the staff attorney for Law Advocates. I'm just speaking as an attorney with, uh, hundreds of hours' experience tonight, who've, uh, I've spent a lot of time speaking to Wacom County tenants and Bellingham tenants. I wanted to first say thank you to those of you who supported and, uh, continue to take an interest in the, uh, the inspection and licensing program for rental housing in Bellingham. I've seen that that's had a positive impact in my work. I've seen the, those certificates in rental units get noticed. I've seen that, uh, Bellingham renters realize that the city has an interest in providing quality housing, and, uh, and I also personally appreciate that I can refer tenants to city inspectors. You guys have a very available forum and resource for inspections, and I've found the city very responsive in that, and I appreciate the council and the mayor's roles in that, and the city attorney as well. I just wanted to come down tonight to support what these, uh, what these previous speakers are saying. I think in particular, uh, some sort of mandatory pamphlet, a piece of paper, a few pages, in the hands of each new renter in, uh, in the city of Bellingham, would have also a very positive impact. Much of what we do at the tenant clinic is education, even on the simplest issues, solving problems, but also just making people aware of both their rights and their responsibilities as renters. And, uh, I think there is really no substitute for something in writing that comes to you when you begin that, that rental obligation. I lived in Ann Arbor for two years. I personally experienced, long before I ever considered becoming an attorney, what it is like to have that information put in your hand by your landlord and start that relationship off in a positive way, and I, I hope you will make some effort to, uh, to, uh, maintain contact with this tenants' union and, uh, look at their proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Uh, up next is Peter Frazier, followed by Yoshi Ravel, and then Carla Stellwagen.
Hi, uh, tonight I'm speaking on behalf of myself and David Johnston of Clear Story Investments and Bob Hall of, uh, Daylight Properties. As business manager of Clear Story, I'm responsible for the comfort and safety of nearly a hundred elderly people and thirty employees at the Leopold Retirement Community, and roughly sixty office workers at Bellingham National Bank Building. And over the last three years, the office workers, residents, property owners, and business owners, and the people who come downtown to enjoy it, have, uh, suffered from a rise in antisocial and criminal behavior downtown. Uh, this includes people setting fires in the Bellingham National Bank, uh, entranceway, tearing wood trim off the building to, uh, feed the fire. Uh, we have endured daily cleanup of human waste and the evidence of drug-taking, drug deals, stolen bikes, other property crimes, and seeing behavior so unfit for any passerby to witness, I'm embarrassed to face the seniors at the Leopold and the women of the Attorney General's Office in the Bellingham National Bank Building, uh, who come and go at all hours and have to pass through our, um, entranceway. Over the last month, I've met with the mayor, some of you, and, uh, the chief of police, several of his policemen, uh, business owners, office workers, and residents of downtown, so I can understand the situation and all its complexity. And I've come to the following conclusion: We need a low-barrier shelter, and the rotor site is far from perfect, but it's one that can be, uh, we can implement the quickest. It's efficient for the lighthouse mission who'd be running it, and it's one that we can afford. My understanding is that there are plenty of other places on port property for the current Marine Services businesses to move to, and they have room for expansion there. But if we are to have a low-barrier shelter and, uh, the pledged financial support from us, we also need to give the police the tools they need to protect the elderly Leopold residents, the downtown office worker, and the diners and shoppers' kids who should be able to enjoy a vibrant downtown. We need a failure-to-appear ordinance, expansion of the no-sit, no-lie ordinance's geographic area and time, and greater use of the obstruction ordinance. These are the tools the police say they need to do the job we expect them to do. We're in a state of emergency downtown, and we require your attention. I love Bellingham's big heart. I support the work of the Opportunity Council and supported the Home Fund, but we who have invested in downtown, we who work there and live here, must not be held hostage to antisocial and criminal behaviors of fifty to seventy people. People with addiction and mental health issues need to be given the opportunity to get the help they need, and criminals need to get dealt with swiftly by police and enter the criminal justice system.
Time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Low-barrier shelter. I'm for it.
Okay. Uh, Yoshi's up next, followed by Carla Stellwagen, and then Elizabeth Jennings.
Thank you, uh, members of the audience and staff, members of the city council, Madam Mayor. My name is Yoshi Ravel. I'm glad that a lot of people are speaking about the homeless tonight, but I am saddened by the tone. Homeless people are our sisters and brothers. They are fellow human beings. In fact, if we really want to be honest, the homeless are us. Our system is set up so that some people get treated like garbage and dumped, and then we want to call in the police and to dump on them some more. That is not right. A system that rejects people, treats them like garbage, will fail. Homeless people are us. We are homeless in that we can't see our neighbors suffering. It's very easy to ignore the suffering of others. We can put it up here and pretend it's not happening, but what happens is we start neglecting our own legitimate needs. We have disconnected our heads from our hearts. Homeless people are us. They are fellow human beings. When we mistreat the homeless, we mistreat ourselves. We misunderstand our own suffering. A community and a society that ignores the needs of those who are most vulnerable will Homeless people are us. They deserve our kindness and our respect. Thank you very much, and I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Carla Stellwagen, followed by Elizabeth Jennings, and then Bryce Hammer.
Thank you for those comments. My name's Carla Stellwagen. I live in the Seehome neighborhood. I'm active in Seehome activities and, um, don't often speak to council. It's difficult to be a planner. It sounds like it's also difficult to be a councilperson. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about, um, the AS student, um, suggestions to include a packet with the landlord lease detailing tenant rights and responsibilities. I am a landlord. I find when you meet your tenants on an equal basis, I often give, uh, when, when I was in Seehome, my first job was to bring out the tenants' rights and responsibilities, uh, details from the, that are available on state websites, but it's not all that convenient to corral it all and bring it to one place. It's a really important place to start with trust between tenants and landlords. By giving the trust to say, here are your rights, you are strengthening the bond, hopefully informing, and I think it's an excellent idea. Wrapped into that, we get voter registration. What could be wrong with this? It's a few pages of paper. Now, we've noted that Ann Arbor, where I also used to live, um, has thirty-seven pages in their document. I think we just need what the students are proposing. I'd like to add one more page. I think that there should be another document, uh, from Sanitary Services detailing how to break up garbage, uh, how to, uh, put thing, you know, if it's windy, you know, put a, some lid on top of those little small bins where the, the trash doesn't go everywhere. Something, as, I think Mayor Kelly knows, that's important to my heart. I, I ran for, uh, as though you can run for a Seehome neighborhood job on a no-litter policy, but, uh, it's not been working that well. I do meet with all of the students in our neighborhood and try to say, you know, you have to break up those boxes. Okay, so I've made my point about that. I still have forty-seven seconds. And I'm here-
You don't need to use it.
For it's completely different to, um, appreciate the planning department's, uh, ordinance change to, uh, not have, to, it's a negative, to, um, not allow chain-link fences, um, between, uh, single-family residences and, uh, commercial. We live at one oh eight North Thirty-Fourth, and our house was the first proj, lived next to the first project in the sandwich urban village, and I now look at a six-foot chain-link fence. The corollary to its chain-link fence is, what do you do with it? You put ivy on it, English ivy, which is a class-two invasive plant. I'm on the arboretum board. It should not be allowed.
Okay, thank you very much, Carla. Next is Elizabeth Jennings, followed by Bryce Hammer, and then Alida Cervantes.
Good evening, uh, council members, Mayor Kelly. I want to thank everyone who turned out this evening in support for, um, housing and solutions to homelessness. I'm speaking in favor of the low-barrier shelter, um, and I want to start by thanking the council and all of our community members who have made a lot of solutions possible. Um, the low-barrier shelter is not the solution to homelessness in Bellingham. It's just a need to protect basic human rights and dignity. Um, we know that we are in an affordable housing crisis, and it's linked to our homelessness problem. We need more housing generally. We need more affordable housing, and as long as there's that pressure from the higher end of the market, um, as we all know, most of our neighbors are paying more than thirty percent of their income on housing, which means that housing here is unaffordable. So I do appreciate everything that the city has done in policy and zoning, in an emphasis on increasing density, and I would increase all of my neighbors in the Sunnyland Lower West Side and other neighborhoods, um, to consider how we can accept density into our neighborhoods in appropriate and, um, pleasant ways. Um, but we do know that even though we're making progress, and thanks to, um, a vast majority of Bellingham voters who approved the Bellingham Home Fund, we have public-private partnerships that are making more housing and more affordable housing possible in Bellingham. That's just a part of the solution. Housing first is the solution that's being, um, that has been pushed by our coalition to end homelessness for a number of years, and we know that housing first and permanent stable housing is the solution. Emergency shelter, transitional shelter are necessary, but they're the most expensive and least effective ways of permanently housing our, our neighbors and our community members. However, it's also necessary. Um, and I would advocate that those who are helping to push for a low-barrier shelter do so in a way that focuses on, um, human rights and the dignity of our neighbors, and not just as a way to make downtown prettier. I think we do need to obviously focus on safety and, um, how to protect the rights of all of us who walk and purchase things and buy things and eat downtown, as well as those that live downtown. Um, but I think that we can all work towards a low-barrier shelter as one of the solutions that's needed in a larger systematic, um, overall solution. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Bryce Hammer, followed by Alida Cervantes, followed by Wayne Rocke.
Good evening. My name is Bryce Hammer, and I am the Vice President for Governmental Affairs at the Associated Students at Western. Um, I wanted to talk to you about two issues tonight, both of which are very personal to me. The first one is voter registration forms in new tenants', um, rentals. Uh, you, some of you may or may not know that Western registers more students to vote than any other institution of higher education in this state, including, um, the University of Washington, which has three times the amount of students that we do, and less than half of the students registered that we do, and that's whole numbers, not percentages. Um, this year we registered three thousand four hundred and ninety-three, um, which is pretty impressive, um, but our strategy is target on-campus students, and we miss off-campus students, um, and it really prevents these students from engaging with the community and coming to things like city council meetings, county council meetings, and, um, being aware of what all of you do and the issues going on in our community, so I want to highly encourage that you require voter registration forms. The second issue is even more personal, and it's about, um, tenant education. And so last year, I moved off-campus for the first time, and about six months into my lease, um, my landlord started doing repairs on our house, including taking the paneling off of the side of the house and reinstalling paneling, which is pretty nice. It, um, made the entire complex look better. The unfortunate thing is that when he took the paneling off, he also took the glass off of our windows, and while they were repairing it, they knocked the blinds into my bedroom, onto my bed, and I got drywall everywhere. They broke glass, they broke numerous possessions, um, and they actually broke the blinds. And when I talked to my landlord about it, and I was like, hey, by the way, the blinds are broken, I don't know what you want me to do about it, he said, oh, well, that will come out of your deposit because it's normal wear and tear. Um, I don't know what you define as normal, but that's not normal to me, having a man stick his foot in my room while I'm sleeping at six AM in the morning. That's not normal either. Um, and I work in governmental affairs. I work on issues like this routinely, and I didn't even know that that wasn't okay. In fact, I still have no clarification if that was okay or not because the laws in this city are incredibly hard to read. Um, so again, we're not advocating for a thirty-six-page pamphlet, just a short, short explanation as to what, um, tenants can do in order to get issues like this taken care of. Um, I really think that those two things will help integrate students into this community because I know a lot of times we get told that we're transient and we move on, and we're not actual Bellinghamsters, um, but I really don't think that that's true. This is the place where we discover our identities for the first time, and for a lot of us, this is home. So thank you for listening, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Up next, Alida Cervantes, followed by Wayne Rocke, and then Cora Cole.
Um, hi, my name is Alida Cervantes. Thanks for getting it right, no one does. Uh, I use she/her pronouns, and I am the, uh, Associated Students Vice President for Diversity. I'm here to talk about tenant rights and responsibilities. I lived here for four years, and I plan to stay after I graduate. In my four years, I volunteered with different communities in Bellingham, most of them Spanish-speaking, majority of them farmworkers, which means they work very long hours, and though kids are bilingual, majority of the parents are not, and providing tenant educational packages in both languages will support these families in understanding their rights better, and as for better support when they need it, and just for future reference. In some cases, I work with people who didn't know their basic rights as tenants, such as the timeline that landlords have when a, when a tenant calls to do any type of reparation in the property. In some cases, those reparations, um, came out of the pockets of these families because they didn't know their rights. So I think creating this package in both languages will definitely create a more healthy community, um, here in Bellingham. And again, like, thank you for listening, and please make, uh, tenant education more accessible for diverse communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, up next will be Wayne Rocke, and then Cora Cole, and Alyssa Kaufman.
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Wayne Rocke, um, the Vice President for Student Life at Western Washington University. Um, I'm a resident of the York neighborhood, um, and I'm here to talk to you about tenant education and tenant, uh, and tenant notification of voter registration to improve voter access in the city of Bellingham. Many immigrant families, international students, and other newcomers to the- Many immigrant families, international students, and other newcomers to the United States and the city of Bellingham do not have equitable access to the education and voter registration. Being new to this city and country means that many of our new residents do not have the education they need, and that is their right. Many do not know they have specific rights. This leaves room for them to be taken advantage of. Many will not have the knowledge to challenge these actions and take advantage of them. I'm hoping that the members of our council are able to take these lived and daunting experiences into account. These folks, no matter what language they speak or where they're from, are still members of our community and deserve fair and equitable access to knowing their rights and how they can exercise them. It is empowering to see that relationship building, it is empowering to see constant relationship building, and we should ensure that our outspoken and vibrant civic society is essential, and that the tenant and landlord relationships are pivotal to that. Providing tenants with education on their rights and responsibilities will be a significant step towards making sure everyone in our community has access to safe and healthy homes. Many renters, especially first-time renters, don't know the complexities of landlord-tenant law and are susceptible to being taken advantage of, again, such as having their security deposits unfairly deducted or broken appliances not having fixed in a timely manner. Tenant education will benefit landlords and homeowners in neighborhoods by ensuring renters receive education on their responsibilities to upkeep their home and property. This is a win for all parties. Thank you again for listening to me, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Wayne. Up next is Cora Cole, followed by Alyssa Kaufman, and then by another Alyssa, Alyssa Waldbauer.
Good evening, city council members and community members. I'm Cora Cole. I'm a poli sci student up at Western, and I have two issues I want to talk to you about tonight. First, I want to voice support for the proposed location of the low-barrier shelter. Particularly, I want to thank you for working with the businesses there and the Port Commission there, and support your continued efforts to ensure a smooth process. I think that making sure that all community members have a place to stay is really important. I know that it doesn't solve the problem of unavailable housing, but making sure that people have a place to stay, particularly a low-barrier shelter, is really important for preserving the dignity of members of our community and supporting them. Secondly, I want to talk about a slightly older issue for you. I want to thank you for the passage of an ordinance voicing support for undocumented community members. I think it means a lot that this community tries to do real work to oppose violence in our city and county. There are, as there are with many laws, some things that can be done to make this ordinance stronger and make the support more substantial. These include, but are not limited to explicitly ensuring that interaction with city employees won't land anyone in ICE custody. This is particularly important for undocumented people who are attending public schools. Secondly, preventing city taxes from being used for immigration enforcement, as is still allowed in Section 2.25.030 of the ordinance. Thirdly, by creating a civilian oversight board, as was proposed in the original Keep Bellingham Families Working Ordinance. If you go to the Keep Bellingham Families Working page, you can look at their ordinance side by side with the city ordinance and see some of the disparities that exist and ways that the undocumented community in Bellingham sees this ordinance could be improved to make the support more substantial. By doing this, you can strengthen the resolution that you have brought forward and create stronger, real support for members of our community who deserve and demand respect and lives lived without fear of deportation or racial profiling. I think this is the least we can do to support these members of our community, and I look forward to continuing to talk with you about ways that we can continue the support, both for undocumented community members and for people who are currently homeless and for the areas where those communities sometimes overlap. Thank you so much. Have a lovely evening, and I'll call you later this week about these issues.
Thank you. Next up, Alyssa Kaufman, followed by Alyssa Waldbauer, and then our last speaker will be Colin Middleton.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Alyssa Kaufman. I'm a student at Western Washington University, as well as resident of Bellingham. I'm here to talk to you today about housing rights. I want to start off by thanking you for the rental safety inspection. This has really helped me to feel safe in my own home, and I would really like for us to take the next step in renters' rights. This is, I believe, our tenant education. I'd like to ask that we provide tenants with documentation in both English and Spanish that outlines our rights. I think this is instrumental in empowering renters and ensuring that we know our rights as well as our responsibilities. Myself, like many other students, are often losses first-time renters, and there's no easy way to understand the expectations for both parties. We easily fall prey to this ignorance. I'd like to urge you to enable tenant education by providing renters with this type of information. Moreover, I'd like to ask for tenant notification of voter registration. Most students can easily move as much as every year, and there's no need to complicate this process, so I'd like to ask you to support tenant notification of voter registration. I'd also like to express my support of the low-barrier shelter at its current proposed location and the Keep Bellingham Families Working Ordinance, especially the civilian oversight board as described in this ordinance. Thank you so much for all the work that you've done, and thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, Alyssa Waldbauer, and then Colin Middleton will finish out the public comment period.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Waldbauer. I am a student at Western Washington and a resident of Bellingham, Washington. I want to voice my support in a lot of issues that have been addressed tonight, including tenant rights, making sure that tenants, when they move into buildings, are aware of their rights and responsibilities. I know for myself, and I know for others, other students like me, I was not aware of my rights and responsibilities. I had to, my parents were instrumental in this, my landlord was not. I would like to have physical documentation available and accessible for those who do not speak English so that we have better understanding and communication. I would also like to voice my support in having voter registration easily accessible to new tenants because, as someone who has moved a lot, updating your voter registration is something that you don't necessarily think about, but voting is instrumental to being a part of the community, and I think it's really important, and people should have access to such. I also want to quickly voice my support for the low-barrier shelters that are being proposed right now. I appreciate the work that you have all done and appreciate the work that will continue in providing homes for those who are in need of them. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, and now Colin.
Hello, my name is Colin Middleton. I'd like to thank you for listening to all of our comments this evening. I would like to support the tenant education that these students have talked about, as well as the tenant notification of voter registration. I think that's really important, and moving around is pretty stressful. I'd also like to support the, tell you that I support the low-barrier shelter proposal. I think it's a great proposal. The homeless community members in Bellingham definitely need some help. There's a lot of people in kind of a critical condition, and I think it's just a problem that's, at this point, not getting addressed sufficiently. So I think the low-barrier shelter is a good step in that direction, and I also like to support the undocumented workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Okay, that ends our 15-minute public comment period, which went well beyond 15 minutes. We will now go to the regular committee, standing committee meeting reports. The first committee which met today, this afternoon, was Public Works and Public Safety, and that committee is chaired by Councilwoman Terry Bornham.
Thank you, Michael. We had five items before us today. The first was a regional fire authority planning process. The city of Bellingham's Fire Department and Watcombe County Fire Protection District 8 desire to explore the formation of a regional fire authority. This presentation provided an overview of the regional fire authority and the planning process for forming a regional fire authority. During this presentation, Chief Newbold discussed the upcoming planning process for this, and had mentioned that the planning committee that they're looking forward to put together would consist of three members from each body, the mayor, and hopefully two council members, and three members from the fire commissioners. He'll be bringing, continuing this discussion at the next meeting. This was for information only. The next item was a job ordering, discussion of a job ordering contracting process. The city of Bellingham uses a conventional design bid process for nearly all public works projects. The process works well for large projects but can be cumbersome, time-consuming, and expensive for small-scale projects. Staff is seeking authorization to utilize a job ordering, job order contract, a JLC, for a small public works project up to $350,000. $350,000 doesn't sound small, but with public works, it adds up quick, the amount of dollars spent on those projects. The JLC process is used by the federal and state agency, as well as larger municipalities, to quickly and efficiently procure and deliver small projects, but is partially well-suited, particularly well-suited for renovation, repairs, and remodel projects. Staff provided a presentation on the JLC process. A draft resolution was included for consideration. However, the action on the resolution will be scheduled for a future council meeting. This was for information only. The next item was a report from the Transportation Commission's, Transportation Commission Update and Work Plan Review. The Chair of the Transportation Commission presented their 2016 annual report and provided an update on their 2017 work plan. For those interested in more information on this, I would recommend going to the website and seeing the presentation or on the TV-10, the repeat of the programs. The next item was a bid award for the Woodstock Intersection Improvements Bid 73B 2016. The Woodstock Intersection Improvement Project involves realigning the intersection at James Street and Woodstock Way so that Woodstock becomes the through movement. The intersection will be brought up to full arterial standards with sidewalk and bicycle lanes. The city received three bids for which were publicly opened on April 12, 2017. Ram Construction was the responsible bidder who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $1,254,629.90, including any applicable Washington State sales or use tax. The engineer's estimate was $1,692,802. The committee recommended awarding the bid to Ram Construction and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion before us. Is there any further discussion of a bid award for the Woodstock Intersection Improvements? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the bid award for Woodstock Intersection Improvements signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That packs a 6-0 with one excused absence.
Okay, the last item before us was a discussion on the proposal to remove on-street parking from Orleans Street. The 2014 Bicycle Master Plan recommends removing on-street parking from one side of Orleans Street from Alabama Street North to Barclay Boulevard for the purpose of installing marked bicycle lanes. Public Works conducted a parking survey in November and December 2016 and documented an extremely low parking utilization rate on the west side of the street. Public notices were mailed to all properties abutting each street. On February 14, 2017, the Transportation Commission received the proposal and voted 7-0 to recommend approval to the city council. On March 13, 2017, city council directed staff to re-notify property owners that council would like to consider moving parking, removing parking from the east side rather than the west side of the street. The committee today had a discussion about this. Staff was looking for direction. The committee recommended a removal of parking on the east side of the street and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion before us to approve the removal of on-street parking on the east side of Orleans Street. Is there any discussion? Pinky.
So I looked over all the information on this and what the staff recommendation was, and if you look at all of these around the numbers of east and west, it's almost zero on the west, and it's consistently parking on the east. So I completely understand that this is an inconvenience for Barbara, who's had a business there for a very long time, but I don't feel like we're making the right decision on the numbers that are presented to us and the amount of people that are actually going to be affected by this. And though I do believe that it is unfortunate that Barbara's business would be, and her clients who've been there many years, I recognize that it is an inconvenience for them, but that's one business. And these numbers show us that the parking, we're asking to switch the way it's actually working right now and asking everybody to cross the street who already parks on that side. So the numbers say we should be removing parking on the west because everybody's parking on the east. So why would we vote for the west versus the east? Does that make sense?
Okay. April.
So Ted, the recommendation still stands as the original to remove, is that right?
Good afternoon, good evening, Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. Yeah, when staff started looking at this, going back to when Orleans was identified for a bicycle lane as part of the Bicycle Master Plan, at that time, the plan actually suggested removing parking on the east side. There wasn't a lot of information. One side had to be picked, knowing that once we dove a little bit into more detail into the project, we would use the information that we obtained to make a further recommendation. Staff, knowing that land use is the same on both sides, the only real distinguishing factor was parking utilization. So because of the counts and the parking utilization that we saw during our times that we went out and counted, we did recommend removing parking on the west side because the utilization is much, much less. So that recommendation does stand, just because that's the information we had. The criteria was really try to put the no-parking signs on the side that has the least amount of parking.
Thank you. Yeah, this really sat in me since the first Public Works meeting that I wasn't able to attend, the committee meeting on that, and I really tried to understand, like, why is this irritating me more than it really should? And I think what I really got down to is when I decided to get involved in city government, it was because I just was really confused as to how the system worked and how we could really make a difference in changing the system. And then it hits me every once in a while when I'm sitting on council, is like, oh, these are the systems that are in place that marginalized people don't really get heard, and then others do, and they have the time and the energy, and they have the support around them, so they get heard. And then we, instead of looking at the whole picture, sometimes will decide to change something that will benefit somebody that had the time to come in and do that. And that's what really has bothered me about this recommendation. So if council was willing to, I guess, not pass what's in front of them now, I'd propose that we go back to the original. And it's just because we have so many different things like this that are going to come in front of us. The data says, and if we don't like the data, we should figure out with staff how to change and get the right data, but the data says more than three times, people are likely to park on what the staff originally suggested. And having, remembering getting notices and stuff in the mail, especially when I had young kids and we were struggling to make it, I didn't really even understand what they were about, and I didn't even understand that I really had a say. I usually woke up the next day, something changed, and it was like, okay, I got to figure out how to deal with this too. And so I'm thinking that, in my mind, this woman has a business, a hair salon, which Ms. Ira, I totally respect, and I get it, but she was also, because she has this home occupancy business, was able to get her clients, who are, you know, as a privilege, getting the right to come to her business inside a residential area, to voice their concern. So it looked like a lot of concern, but it was for one place. The next time we went out, we The next time we went out, we, we got the same feedback of like, you just shouldn't do bike lanes anyway, people shouldn't be biking on the street. But we also then got somebody on the other side that said, we've tried to put off-street parking for our rental and now, and you said we couldn't do it, city, and now you're telling us you're going to take away the parking out in front. So, they also complained, same, one house, but they didn't, they didn't have a bunch of people to come and stand up for them. And then I'm assuming, as I looked at some of the Auditor's Office information, that there's quite a few rentals in this area. So, again, not quite sure about how people are informed or the time that they have. So, I just think this is one of those examples that we have an opportunity in government to really make sure that we're doing good governance, we're looking at the whole picture, and of course, we're listening to what people have to say, but unless they show some real thing, like something that, something that would really hurt or harm somebody, we need to go with the data and move forward to make sure that we're being equal to all the people in that situation. And we're going to have so many more of these things come forward. I want to make sure that we're kind of looking at them all equitatively and making sure that we're basing our decisions off of that and not necessarily, although it's very important if people do have come to time, time to come and speak with us, we gotta, we gotta make sure that we're also thinking about the people that aren't being heard. So, I'm thinking that in our housing conversations, I'm thinking about that and this. And then I was glad that I was finally able to, hopefully that made sense, voice my concerns. So, again, if you're willing to vote this down, I would bring back that we go with the original staff recommendations. And, and I just ask, if, if we don't like the data, if the data's the problem, then let's get data from staff that we can, we can make sure that we understand it and move forward versus getting kind of a battle between street sides on who can make the most people come forward and tell us they're not really liking what we have.
Terry.
Yeah. Speaking as Chair of the Committee, I think I can, one of the reasons we decided to go with this, we had a public hearing. And public hearings isn't necessarily about the numbers. A lot of times at public hearings, we listen to the individual stories and how that impacts a decision. In this case, we heard from a woman who had a business, whose clientele were older, were senior citizens, many who had problems with walking distances. And that, for me, as somebody who's gone through a whole bunch of leg problems and realized, oh, that's a real thing, for me, I decided and looked at that, that this was a, a real reason to look at one side or another. And that it might be easier for people that are living on one side of the street to walk across the, the street on their parking than how this would affect this person's business and the clientele that she served. So, for mine, it was personal. It wasn't a matter of just looking at straight-line data because we could do decisions based on, on those kind of things and not have the public hearings, or we could have the public hearings where we do hear from individuals, we hear their stories, and it does show. We do listen and public hearings can make a difference. In this case, it made a difference on our committee's vote. And so, that's where I'm at with it, and I think that's, I think I can speak for other committee members, but they can speak for themselves. That's why I made my decision.
Jean.
Yeah, just to remember that night, we had the public hearing, there was, she did not, and be fair to Barbara, she did not get on the phone and have all our clients come here and speak because the only people we heard from that night was her and another gentleman who was against removing parking on the same side of the street where Barbara lives. What we have here are two pretty muted responses to taking off parking. Parking, taking off parking is never a popular thing. We've gone through that on Northwest Avenue, we've gone through it on Cornwall Avenue. We had DeWilde's, remember what we did for DeWilde's because they had an existing business on Northwest Avenue? And she does have elderly parents, uh, parents, elderly patients and elderly hair clients, excuse me. And they walk, you know, to put them all on the east-north side is a little bit dangerous. But I just want to say, if we're, you know, we have advisory committees that advise us, but the bottom line is with us. And there's times when I look at data too, but sometimes I don't agree with it. And this is times that I don't. I lived on that street for 12 years. It's not a lot of parking on either side of the street, I'll give you that, but I'm just trying to be fair to a business owner and other people that live on that side of the street. It's, it's a pretty even call, so I'm, I'm comfortable in my vote.
Roxanne.
Yeah, these aren't always the easiest decisions to make, and I'm not trying to disrespect the data, but they are snapshots and moments in time. It's not a 100% guarantee all of the time about that being the certain outcome of parking on any street. And at the same time, it does give us information. Other information that we need to consider comes from the voices of the community members that would be impacted by our decisions. Thus, I'm going to side with removing the parking on the east side because that seems to me to be the path of least resistance in a complicated decision.
Let me go ahead and take a turn myself. Jean, you make a really excellent point. Truthfully, this is an excellent project, whether it's on the east or the west. Truthfully, we've come to a point in our community where people understand the need and this is not a big controversial decision. We're now down to the small issues and the number of people who will be affected by it and how they will be affected. And there's, there's a point behind the public hearings, you do get richer information in some ways, but Councilor Vargas said, you know, am I making sense? And I would say yes, you were making sense to me, that about two and a half times the number of people will be affected if we remove the parking on the east side. These are small differences, it'll be a good project either way. I'm going to vote against this motion, I prefer the west side, but either way, before the night is through, I want us to move forward on this project. Is there any further discussion on the motion? April.
So, I'll just say for the people that are parking on the street consistently, these are clearly mostly likely residences that will have to do this all day, every day, going back and forth across the street. Again, it's just on what are we going to be basing all these, we have a lot more that are going to come forward and what are we going to base those on? I, I think just to be fair for those that are first coming into this, that this particular beauty salon that's a home occupation is on a corner lot. You, it's a sidewalk going around the street, you, she has parking, as you turn, there's parking right there in front of her establishment as well. So, I just, so that we're, it doesn't sound like we're saying you, you're not going to get to park there and now you won't have access to the business. I also would say that when we had a public hearing, this is again, a part of the flawed process, that all we said was we were going to move parking on that side. So, the people that came were the people that were thinking that that's what's going to happen. We asked for more information and now we're changing our decisions. So, again, it's in that process and how we put it out to people. So, we didn't have another public hearing, not that I want to, but it, I'm just trying to point out that there's systems, there's problems and systems that, that continue to impact people. And I just think that our job is certainly to listen to people when they come speak with us to make sure that we also are, are looking for voices that aren't here to speak to us. So, I won't be supporting.
Any further discussion?
Commissioner, what happens if there's a tie vote?
If there's a tie vote, that means the motion fails and there's no action taken. We could renew a new motion at that point. So, the motion right now is to remove parking on the east side of the street. I just say I want to appreciate that a lot of the conversation is not for against bike lanes. I'm glad we're beyond that. But it is on good public process and I think each of us has stated pretty good reasons on either side. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to provide direction to staff to proceed with removing parking on the east side signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no.
No.
Three, three tie, wait till Mr. Ham will come back.
Motion fails, no action taken. I'll entertain any more motions.
Well, I'll go for it, but it sounds, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we go to the original staff proposal of parking.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, we have a, a motion before us to direct staff to remove parking on the east side of Orleans Streets, in the, sorry, the west side of Orleans Street.
We need to take a geography lesson.
Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor, take it, then Roxanne.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one comment. I just want to know that I very much did listen to both east and west sides and that I'm just basing this decision on, on the data, on how many people will be using this on a regular basis, not temporarily there for an hour, but every day, 365 days a year, and that it affects the majority and that's why I'm making that decision.
Roxanne.
I'm doing the math and I'm thinking that we might end up in the exact same situation. So, I am willing to support this, especially because I want to get on with the show so we can hopefully prove this flag.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion to direct staff to remove parking on the west side of Orleans Streets signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes four, two. Thank you very much. It was an excellent discussion. Terry, is that the end of your committee?
That's the end.
Thank you very much. We will now go on to the next committee, which I believe was Parks and Recreation, and April Barker is the Chair.
Yes, today we only had one item for committee. It was a bid award for Cornwall Park Trail Improvements. I tried to avoid reading the summary statement, but since this is a, a bid award, I'll go ahead and do it. If you'd like to hear more discussion, there was absolutely none, so you can tune into our afternoon. It was zero minutes allotted for this actual item, so you can see where the support was. Cornwall Park Trail Improvement Project includes pedestrian and parking improvements in Cornwall Park. Between Meridian Street and Birchwood Drive, the former park administration building will be demolished and removed to make way for a new trail connection, access improvements, and native habitat planting. The trail will connect to the recently completed Squalicum Creek segment of the Beta Baker Trail. The city received eight bids, which were publicly opened on April 5, 2017. Staff recommends this contract be awarded to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, Dirtworks Bellingham, Inc., in the total amount of $218,119.94. I will add that Parks had a cultural resource study done, there were some people concerned because it's an older building, but they determined it has no significance. The committee voted unanimously to recommend and I so move.
We have a motion, a motion before us to approve a bid award for Cornwall Park Trail Improvements. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six, zero with one excused absence. End of committee?
End of committee.
Okay, well, now we'll go on to committee of the whole. We had several items before us today, I think six in total. The first one is a resolution adopting the official flag of the city of Bellingham. A flag design contest was hosted by the Downtown Bellingham Partnership in September of 2015. The designer of the winning flag, Brad Lockhart of Larick Creative, has dedicated the design to the public domain. There's been increasing popular support of the flag. And the council this afternoon considered adopting the flag, now unofficial, as the official flag of the city of Bellingham. This afternoon, the resolution, the packet was adopted. We added one recital, just to leave out a fact which wasn't in there. In between the second and the third recital's a new one that says, whereas, the designer has dedicated the flag design to the public domain. Other than that, the resolution as presented in the packet was recommended for approval and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Pinky.
I, I just want to say how excited I am for this. You know, everything that we do has to be weighing the best interest of the city. And one of the things that has been very clear to us in the last year is that the city feels, the people of the city who support this flag, who fly this flag all over the place, who are bringing it all over the world, are saying, this is who we are. And it creates a sense of place and it creates an additional sense of identity for the people of Bellingham who believe that this very fun funky flag is also who we are. And just for us to be able to realize that something isn't always about process, sometimes things are bigger than who we are and they just happen. And for us to have the ability and the flexibility to recognize things that are bigger than us and embrace them and identify with them. So, I wanted to thank Bradley Lockhart for actually giving us all the identity and IP and everything for the flag and for the, all the people who have been so supportive about this happening and, and that we will have a little celebration. And on June 14, we will have a flag raising ceremony and we will raise the flag at noon in front of City Hall. So, thank you, everyone, for showing us what you wanted and how important it was to you.
Roxanne and then Terry.
Oh, Terry first, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to thank Brad for this great design. I remember when mutual friend Sam said, I need to, you need to talk to Brad about this great idea he has about this flag. And we, we met and he showed me this flag design and it was brilliant. Simple, but brilliant. And we thought, yeah, this deserves to come before the city council to make this decision and, you know, and here we are finally. It took a while, Brad, but thank you for your, your great design work and for bringing this forward and for the citizens of Bellingham for embracing this. This flag has flown on boats in Vietnam, in Laos, in above hotels, in Cambodia, you know, so I'm definitely supporting it.
Roxanne.
Well, in addition to what you've heard, I wanted to express appreciation for the fact that a part of this story includes stars that reflect the Nuksek Indian tribe and the Lemmy Nation. And I'm going to pretend that the Nuksek tribe is the star on the top, but I just, I can't, I can't. No, but our tribes are very excited about this and I thank you for respecting our cultural heritage here and definitely tying that into the community that we're all woven into. So, Heishka Seam.
April.
Well, it's kind of not normal for us, but it's pretty significant. And I know that we have one of our animal friends here that actually has a crocheted Bellingham flag. I don't know, Dale, if you can get that, but I was just wondering, it, it might not be a problem, maybe we have to wait till after, but I think we should get a picture certainly of Brad and of course of the dog and all of the council members behind the flag. I would like to have that.
We can do it at the end, I think.
Okay. That'd be great.
Sorry, any further discussion of the resolution adopting the official flag of city Bellingham? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six, zero with one excused absence. Okay. Now, we'll go on to budget ordinances. We have a trio of ordinances. This is a part of a, a budget reconciliation process. We, we do. The first one is an ordinance authorizing $23,854,031.15 in re-appropriations. These are for goods and services that were ordered in 2016, but were unpaid at year end when we closed out the books. In the case of construction contracts, the project may be partially completed at year end, but not completely completed. The attached ordinance will reappropriate the necessary funds provided for payment of these items in the 2017, 2018 budget. Basically, we're moving the dollars into the next year, year's budget. Of this amount, the majority of it, $18.8 million was in capital expenditures and $5 million was in operations. This afternoon, the committee of the whole recommended approval and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to approve an ordinance re-appropriating goods and services from 2016 to 2017. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six, zero with one excused absence. The next item is related also to the budget. It's an ordinance authorizing $12,944,281.92 in re-appropriations, this time for goods and services budgeted in 2016, but for which that purchase was, that money was unencumbered at year end by any purchase order. The phasing of large projects and permitting or other anticipated changes in the project schedule necessitates requesting the funds be carried over from 2016 to the new budget cycle of 2017, 2018. The attached re-orderance does reappropriate those funds. Again, the majority of those funds is $11.5 million was in capital projects, a smaller amount in operating, and there's also was about $3 million in revenues that also had to be brought over from one year to the next. This afternoon, the committee of the whole recommended approval and I so move.
Second.
Many discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six, zero with one excused absence. The third one also relates to the budget. This is the one where we adjust the estimated 2017, 2018 beginning reserves. So, after all of those adjustments and other adjustments, we have an estimated beginning reserve for a budget process. This finalizes with the actual number. This will move $60,704,320 to those new estimated, those now actual beginning reserves. Now, the fiscal year's been closed, a reconciliation of each fund is completed and the adjustments are made to the estimates that were originally used in the budget. This afternoon, the committee recommended approval and I so move. Second. Okay, we have a motion before us to approve a budget amendment adjusting the beginning reserves. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes six, zero with one excused absence. And the final item, or maybe it's not final, not quite final, the next item was a resolution adopting amended and restated city council rules of procedure. According to our city charter, the city council shall determine its own rules and order of business. We do this by adopting Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised with modifications, and we provide structure on how we conduct our meetings. The attached amended rules include a section for large public audiences and revisions to the guidelines for public comment, public hearings, and public and revisions to the guidelines for public comment, public hearings, and public participation. This document is just being changed in small ways. It's been the same one since 2014. These are some revisions and improvements to take into account some things we've saw needed some rules for it. This afternoon, the committee of the whole recommended passing the resolution, and I so move. Okay. Any discussion? April.
Just one, we, in section four, this is so tiny, but so we don't have to go back and change it. We just, we said BTV 10. Now that we're going to be in high definition, we're only BTV. So, could you just correct that? And if that's okay with everybody, we can vote it through that way, and we won't have to come back through and clean up our language.
Any objection to striking the number 10, just say BTV? Seeing no objections, so amended. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor passing this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And that passes unanimous, well, 6-0 with one excused absence, and we will be posting those procedural rules on our city's website. The next item this afternoon was a presentation from Western Washington University's Institute for Energy Studies and its director, Joel Swisher. Western's Institute for Energy Studies was founded in 2012 and is one of the, well, he said not the largest, but certainly one of the most ambitious programs of its kind in the nation. The institute integrates rigorous education programs, applied research, and community service to meet the growing demand for interdisciplinary education relating to the production, use, and conservation of energy. It was a nice presentation this afternoon. Dr. Swisher indicated that this institution grew in part out of the need that students expressed to focus on solutions, not just documenting the woes that we have in terms of energy use in this country and our long-term energy future. They focused on building the new energy economy, capturing the entrepreneurial spirit, to train a clean energy workforce for the future, and to add to that growing sector of our economy. The strategy they adopted economizes by using the Western Washington University as their own laboratory. The buildings on Western are the examples that the students work on in ways to improve their energy efficiencies. The program has matured and now actually has several degree programs in different departments to train people. And one of the reasons that we invited Dr. Swisher here is because the Energy Institute was one of our partners in the Georgetown University Energy Prize, for which we're still in the running up there in the front of the pack. We'll find out whether or not we are the national winner for $5 million prize or not. Next, we move on to approval of minutes. I was told we actually have two sets of minutes to approve. So we have sets of minutes from March 27, as well as from April 10.
Move approval.
We have a motion before us to approve both those minutes?
Please.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor approving both those sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 6-0 with one excused absence. Old and new business? Well, go ahead Roxanne first.
Earlier today, I announced a body of work that I'll be doing. Unfortunately, you will, may soon see petitioners gathering signatures for an initiative for a statewide ballot measure that would have harmful effects on our community. Initiative 1552 would really hurt our transgender community and our anti-discrimination laws in Washington State. And fundamentally, what it would do is it would create harmful effects where students wouldn't be allowed to pick the bathroom that they identify with at school. And then it would also allow businesses to decide if they want transgender people to use their bathrooms. So I'll be working with local organizations to draft a resolution to ask our community to please decline to sign that ballot initiative and that, anything pertaining to the petitions. And if it does get onto the Washington State ballots, please vote no on 1552. So hopefully, the council will support that, and I thank you for anybody that declines to sign.
April.
Thank you, Roxanne. I really appreciate you doing that, working in the public schools. You'd be surprised how young, fortunately, because we're being a more open and inclusive community, that children are making those decisions a lot earlier, and therefore not having some negative consequences of having to pretend like there's something that they're not. So fully support and would like to help you in any way possible. I wanted to thank Pinky for coming into the Birchwood neighborhood this weekend. I rolled in a little bit later, so I was glad their council member could be there. Was actually at our retreat with Sustainable Connections, who got the grant that's doing some improvements along the West Maplewood Corridor in placemaking. And what they ended up doing with this particular one is a painted mural at the Shuckson Meadows Park on the backside of Shuckson Meadows. And I think with what Public Works is doing, coming in, they're going to give us new pavement, sidewalks, new street lighting. We have another art project. For those that are living in the community around the area, you can get my contact information from our website, or you can email me at abarker@cob.org, or call, my phone number's everywhere, anywhere, 360-325-5128. But no, it's because we're looking for more and more people to participate. We're getting more and more grants to help create a sense of place, and it really needs to come from the people who live along the streets, who have a real vested interest in the area. So it's picking up. There's more money. There's another grant that some people are trying to get. We have some money in the parks in that area that we're looking to embellish and improve parks. So it's, it's one of those things, the momentum has built, and this would be the time to jump on the train, because we've done a lot of the work to get it there. So thank you so much for representing the council there. And if you get a chance, go along West Maplewood. It's at the backside there of Shuckson, and you can see the new painting. And play in the park while you're there, walk on the street, and visit some of our establishments. It would be great.
Thank you. Anything else under old and new? Okay, thank you very much. We will then move on to reporting out the executive session. We had two items in the executive session. The first one was potential litigation and property acquisitions. Staff provided information on a potential litigation that's tied to a property acquisition matter. Based on that discussion, I would now entertain a motion from a council member to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Port of Bellingham offering the following terms in exchange for the port's relinquishment of its option to purchase the property the city owns at 801-807 Roder Avenue to facilitate the construction of a new barrier shelter. Those points are, one, capital contribution amount of $300,000 from the city to assist the port's investment in infrastructure to support maritime businesses. Two, the use of an unused portion of the chestnut right-of-way retained by the city for now use in the working waterfront businesses at no cost to the port. Three, security fencing to be installed around the perimeter of the site if the housing shelter does go in. Increased financial support to the Lighthouse Mission to increase staffing for their safe neighborhood program, which basically is a way that they kind of self-police the area to make sure there are no problems with the program running in that area. Also, offer of port participation in the site planning, and the port right would give, we would offer the port the right of first negotiation to purchase the property should its use ever revert. Is anyone willing to make that motion? Roxanne?
I move that we authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Port of Bellingham regarding the hopeful development of a low-barrier shelter.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second before us to authorize the mayor to send a letter with these six points. Any further discussion? Roxanne, Pinky?
All right. So I just wanted to express why I want to support this letter, and this has been a really challenging discussion for everyone involved in planning, in the mayor's office, with the port, with the community. And, and we just want to show how important this is to our community. And for people to keep in mind that a low-barrier shelter means that that's housing-first for people. And no one gets better on the street, and we have to find solutions. Everybody's got a lot of things they don't like, but there's not a lot of solutions for us out there. So this is a solution. We're trying to make this work for people as much as we can. We're trying to offer opportunities for the businesses to move to places that actually work better for them, allow for expansion. This also gives the port an opportunity that they don't lose their lease. If they want to in the future, and we develop our waterfront, that is something that we can look forward to. So, you know, this is an opportunity for us to have a place for people to congregate. And we don't have that for our people, for our community who's unsheltered right now. And that's why, you know, our parks, our libraries, and our streets, is that people are going to places because they don't have anywhere to congregate. And this low-barrier shelter would give us an opportunity for people to have social time together and not feel, and not feel the pressure from both sides of the community that we need to solve our problems, and we need to do it together. So we want an opportunity for people to have a decent opportunity at life, and that means that we create a low-barrier shelter. And we are trying as much as we can to make this a good opportunity for everyone, for the port, for the businesses, for the city, but mostly for the people who need a place to live and to be. So we're asking for people's support, and our support with the mayor for this letter, to work with the port, to show that we really need to work together, to solve this together.
Jean, Roxanne?
I've struggled with this for a long time, and, and, you know, I know I'm going to get chastised, saying, oh, you're not in favor of low-barrier shelter. Well, I am in favor of low-barrier shelter. But you know, there's a question that we have to ask ourselves, and I don't have an answer to it. And it's a very simple question. It was put to me today by a couple of constituents who said, there's the Sashin Door site, and there's other sites on Holly Street. But your response, and the city's response is, no, we don't want to put it on Holly because that's going to be an urban village. And the gentleman said, well, you're saying no to that, and the marine tradespeople are saying no there. So here's my problem with this, and one of the reasons I won't be supporting this. I'm really getting concerned that the angst that's out there is going to be out there for a while longer, and the people that are going to suffer are going to be the people we're trying to help. We need to find a place, and I have a hard time believing, even though the staff has done a lot of work trying to find places everywhere. As we sit here tonight, if this letter is passed and the port does take us up on this, there won't be anything built there for over a year. And if we, if the port does not relinquish their right or buy the building, then we, we should start relooking now, in my opinion. That's what we should start doing, even no matter what happens with what the port does. Because I'm just getting nervous that, I've heard from a lot of people, I know you've heard from a lot of people, it's just not, it's just not marine trade people. There's waterfront people, there's people that worked on the first, future, I mean, there's a whole host of people. But if we don't want it on Holly Street, then how can we look the marine trade people in the port in the eye and say, and when they say, why, we don't want it here, I think we're just in a, we're in a, in a, in a, in a box.
Roxanne, and then April.
We are in for a war with this, no matter where this is located. That is the simple fundamental. And I turn into a warrior as I continue to see so many members of my tribe and our local tribes struggling on the street, people of color, women who are struggling on the street, anybody who's struggling on the street. Look, our community so supports this body of work. If they didn't, we wouldn't have a home fund. And that was overwhelmingly supported by the voters. And at the same time, I look at how we are facing a very dire situation in our country that will affect us locally. We're going to have more people on the streets and more people struggling. I would rather we had something like this and more things like this as we develop into the future. I just don't see any other way, because we're, like I said, we're going to be in for a war no matter where it is, but I'm willing to fight for our homeless people. I'm willing to fight for people who don't have a voice here. I really want to do everything I can to try to help and protect people and provide better services, more equitable services on the street level, not just at the dais, but bringing services directly to where people need them. So I'm definitely going to support this, and I will fight for it.
April.
I want to thank Kelly and the staff for not making this a war and a fight. I think Kelly said it best at the last MNC meeting, which was very interesting to see how MNC responded and a lot of support, that this wasn't just, we chose this. It was, I think you used the word attrition. It was kind of like, it fell out of everything, and there it is. And one of the reasons why I wouldn't suggest that we scrap this and go on a whole nother process, or go have to open up a whole nother can of worms, is one, we have a partner involved in this, and we need to think about them. They're bringing almost $2 million to the table that would be coming out of your taxpayer money if we needed to build this and do this on our own. And we already know we're spending, we need to work on our deficit issues. I think, I think what a lot of people need to do, a lot of us electeds in this situation, my advice, but I've only been around for a short period of time, is this is why we have plans. And, and sometimes people give us a really hard time about our plans, because we have plans, and then we have plans on top of plans, and plans within the plans. But the plans are there, so whenever things like this come up, we can follow our plans. And Old Town, there has been a lot of input and a lot of suggestion, and it's like the ball is finally rolling. We have some investors, they're moving forward in those. Just like that, if we decide to put it in Old Town, we're going to get the same pushback. So I don't, whatever community it's from, just like we learned, if you say it's going to be the Albertsons, Old St. Luke's, I mean, it's just like, it's like whack-a-mole. I mean, it's just this whole side of the community rises up, and then the next whole side, and should be laughing about it, but it's, it's interesting to watch. So I think for the, I think what I would ask this community, and I would ask our port electeds, is to say, go back to your plans. That if you're going to spend three, and it's three-quarters of a million dollars, if, if you're able to find that kind of money, and you decide that you're going to buy this site, which already the tenants have told us, don't have plumbing in the winter because it freezes, it's flooding, the first thing that came out of one of the contractors that works there is mouth whenever they, he met with me, to say that he didn't want a homeless shelter there, was that his employees were actually, when they first heard they were going to move, were actually excited because the site so doesn't work well for them. The reality is, and what we've learned, that there's equipment that actually allows this site to be productive and efficient for some of the people that are there. And this particular equipment, we, we need other things like it, clearly, and we have a lot of property. That's why I think people see so much property on the waterfront, and they're like, why aren't we using it? Because we need to make investments. Well, here we've said three-quarters of a million dollars. And now we're also saying, we'll put in another 300, because we really believe in the marine trades. And we think that we shouldn't just look at this site and decide, we don't want this use, we don't want an acre of our waterfront taken up. We should see that this is a community interest. This is extremely important, what we should all be working on together. And then we should make the appropriate investor, investment of the taxpayers' money, and go out and see what other infrastructure we can put in place that will open up the waterfront and the marine trades. It's pretty simple to me, and I don't understand the contention on that, so I'm really hoping our electeds will be able to come forward. I think, Kelly, you took the high road on this, and you decided, what else can we do to sweeten this pot? And the biggest difference is time. We could have something up and going, not this winter, but the next, and we start this whole process over. You could be three to four years, and then looking at litigation from other people that are vested in other parts of our city. This is an opportunity for two bodies to come and work together on a very important public interest, public need, and also with that, get this unexpected benefit of like, let's help out marine trades too. Like, who knew that they were sitting there on this site and not doing very well, and we were not managing it, I will just have you know. But that now they have an opportunity to flourish, and we can see that. Nobody's wanting to just take jobs away and just say, hooey, you know, that's not important. We're, we're all wanting to get relocation, and hopefully even more accessibility for marine trades. So I see this as a win-win. I always see the cup as full. I think that's how I got through life and probably to where I'm at now. So, thank you. It's been tough, and a huge thank you to your staff. There's some of your staff that, these are competing interests. They're having to talk with businesses, and they're having to do this, and they're balancing it extremely well. I imagine it's very hard, and I'm, I'm very appreciative, so thank you.
Terry?
Yeah, I, I'll support this, this effort in terms of trying to offer the port a way to be able to do this. Ultimately, at this point anyway, it is the port's decision. I hope they do take the, do take the offer. Do I think this is a perfect location? No, it's not. I kind of hate to see it go on the waterfront where I would like to see marine trades stay, because it is, it is water. But there is no, there's no perfect location, no matter where we put it, we are going to have pushback. If we can't convince the port, then Jean, let's say, let's look at, you know, Sashin Door or the other sites, if that's what we have to do. But if we can get this, then, you know, this is the, this is the place we're going to be able to find. This is the place we're going to be able to build a shelter the quickest. The place that's not appropriate is camps in the parks, camps along the streams, garbage along the streams, and, and all the other stuff that's going on. Until we have a low-barrier shelter, it becomes very hard to come in and move people out and say, you have to get out when there's no place for them to go. So we need a low-barrier shelter for people to have a place before we can really move on some of the other issues that people are, are really, you know, upset about. People need a place. And as long as we- And as long as we have a society that is based on a free market, get as much as you can for housing prices, you know, as long as you can, we're going to have these housing problems in Bellingham. And right now, people are getting as much as they can, and people can't afford rent in a lot of cases. People look, these aren't just, we're not just talking about people with drug and alcohol and mental health problems. There are a lot of people that can't afford that first, last, they got behind, they lost their house, and they can't get into something, and we have, we do have to do something. So I'll support the efforts to try to make this one work. If not, this doesn't work, then I'll continue to support the need for a low-barrier shelter, and we have to find a place.
Thank you, Terry. So to kind of let the public know what's going on, the city actually already owns this property, but the port has a, an option to purchase the property, and we're asking them not to exercise this option. But more than that, this letter is meant to be a positive gesture to say, look, we want to partner with you with not only helping a new home for the businesses that have to move, but maybe find them a better home, contribute towards building infrastructure to support maritime businesses, not just those, but all maritime businesses in the area. As you say, hopefully it's a win-win situation, or at least there's no, no large losers. I think Ms. Jennings, during the public comments there, said it pretty well, that this is just one important piece in a larger set of, of solutions related to housing, related to homelessness. We need a broad effort on many fronts, not just by the city, but by private, by state, by, by the other organizations, by nonprofits in our community. And I think shelters are best seen as an entry point into a helpful system. This is not going to be a warehouse. The housing-first model always implies there's something second, and third, and fourth. You know, experts in the area tell us that we can't end temporary homelessness, but we can end permanent homelessness, meaning there's always misfortune, there's always job loss, health crisis. One of the largest contributors to homelessness in, in women is domestic violence, where they have to flee the home they used to live in, and now they are homeless. So that sort of misfortune maybe will always be with us, but permanent homelessness means that you fall off, you know, out, out of the system, and you can't get back in. And the housing-first approach says, well, let's get you into housing, and then let's look for what's next. Housing first, services next, and then hopefully employment and independence after that. So this is a complex issue. I also share some of your sentiments, Terry. This is a positive step forward. I support this effort entirely. I hope the port says yes. This is our quickest, easiest solution, though it's not a perfect solution. If this doesn't work out, we will need to keep looking, because this problem stays with us. And a recent community survey indicated the problem of homelessness is seen as a number one concern. I hear it. Hey, what are you, the city, doing about it? And I can list off all the housing programs that we're involved in, I can list off the partner agencies that we support, I can list our homeless outreach team. But you know, right now, it's not enough, and this will be one more element. Again, this is one piece in a larger puzzle. So I hope this goes through. If not this, then another, you know, shelter, and again, housing first, and then second, and third, and fourth. Is there any further discussion on authorizing the mayor to send this letter to the port of Bellingham, who's, I believe, the commission will be meeting next Tuesday, in two weeks, on Tuesday? Okay? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That passes five, one, with one excused absence. Thank you very much. The second item during our executive session was a collective bargaining strategy session having to do with the Bellingham Police Guild. Staff provided information regarding labor relations strategy, and no action was taken, but direction was, direction was given. And Brian has just spooked our mayor by sneaking up behind her. I think that's because you're, maybe you're next on our agenda. It's the mayor's report.
No, he was reminding me that I, it was two weeks from last Tuesday, so it's next Tuesday.
So a week from tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't have a report.
No report?
Nope. I just wanted to thank you for considering all the things you did tonight. I guess I buy a flag now. I have a flagpole. And also, I am, what?
Brad.
Celebrate.
And, and anyway, I, I think Michael summarized this really well. You all had very pertinent comments to make, and that is, this is, for the homeless shelter, the site that fell out the bottom of the box. It wasn't the first choice, or the second choice, or the third choice. And when we came across the idea that our tenants did not have, had very high rent and inadequate facilities that they're working out of, what we decided was, if we invested with the port on better facility, what they, infrastructure that they actually needed, we would actually be making the jobs situation better and not worse. So our commitment, my commitment as the mayor, having worked on this, is that our tenants will find an appropriate place on port property to continue to create the family wage jobs that they have. And I have had that commitment since day one, and I haven't changed my mind. And I'm hoping that we can get the port to work with us, to find that location, and to make that investment with us, to make sure that our tenants are adequately supported.
Thank you, Kelly. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
We have a motion before us to approve the consent, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That passes six to zero with one excused absence. Are there any final ordinances to read? I don't think there are.
Nothing on the agenda.
Are we done?